Hello everyone and welcome to another edition of the Ask Bill Keegan Show. I'm your host, Bill Keegan, Town Manager here in Foxborough. Here with me today are my two guests, Ally Rodriguez, who is our new Veterans Agent, and Mike Johns, who is the new Assistant Town Manager and HR Director. So, man who wears multiple hats in this community.
Thanks for having me, Bill.
So, first of all, I'd like to start off with, just for meeting with Ally, because she's one of our newest members of the staff.
Yes.
And so, welcome.
Thank you so much.
It's good to have you here. And so, you started in January of this past year?
I did.
Alright, and tell us a little bit about where you're from and what brought you here to Foxborough?
Sure, well, I am a Massachusetts-born, but I grew up overseas in the Azores. And then I came back, had an American education. I enlisted at 17, and I haven't been back until about five years ago, back to Massachusetts.
Okay.
I love it here, I've lived all over the country, but Massachusetts just leads the way. The food is great, the people are great, so I love it here. And then, prior to being the VSO, I was a Disabled Veterans Outreach Program Specialist with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And basically, it's just a fancy title for an employment representative. So, I would take veterans who were looking for employment, and I would redo their resume, I'd interview with them, get them all ready, introduce them back into the community and back into employers, and then, our goal was that they would eventually find employment. And it was pretty successful as that.
Great, great. So, when you came to Foxborough, you weren't really a Veterans Agent in your previous employment, but you represented veterans-
Yes.
-in many different ways. So, you've been on the job three months now, right?
Yeah.
This has been a fast three months.
So, fast.
So, tell us a little bit about what has worked well for you and what do you still see as some challenges?
Well, first, I'm just amazed how welcoming this community has been. I'm blown away, everybody's been so nice and just very welcoming, so thank you for all of that, and all the veterans have just come in, introduced themselves, and so I'm very blessed to be here. The challenge, I find, is working in the municipality government. This is new to me, and so I'm still learning the ropes, still learning lots. I have a lot to learn, but it's asking the right questions, and who does this, and who do I go for that? So, that's a little challenging for me.
Right.
But, the job in itself, oh my gosh, you never know what you don't know, right? So, being in this role as the VSO, there's a lot I don't know, but I'm learning every day, and I have a great support system, and I'm fortunate that the Assistant Town Manager was the former VSO, so I can just call him up and say, "Hey, I got a question." And he's always been there, so thank you for that.
And I will notice, by the way, I noticed that in the first few weeks, you were there almost on a daily basis, and now, it's like more like a weekly basis, and it'll be a monthly basis pretty soon, before we're through, in terms of you getting where you need to be and catching up on things. But, yeah, it is great that Mike is there as a daily resource for you in that role. But, also Matt, who's been, you know, your great first right-hand and left-hand-
He is my right-hand man, yes.
...in terms of the organization, has done, Matt McKenzie is the Administrative Assistant in the office. So, it's interesting, because it's more, you know, people think of Veterans Agents as, in a traditional form, as being a male, probably dominated position, but you're sort of breaking new ground in some ways. So, have you found that to be a challenge?
Sometimes, it is. I don't look like a veteran, so when people come in, they want to talk to the Veterans Agent, and they think that I'm my Assistant Secretary. So, they think he's the Veterans Agent and I'm his Secretary, and it's like, no, it's the other way around, you know?
We sort of reversed the whole operation there.
Yeah, we did, no, we're breaking the ground.
It's breaking the ground.
It's 2019.
Yeah, that's right, exactly right.
I will say that one of the biggest things that veterans need and look for in an Advocate, in a VSO, is trust. And in the three short months that Ally has been here, she's gained trust. Her name is around there as somebody who's dedicated, works hard for them, so she's taken great traction and doing a fantastic job. We're proud of her.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, that's very nice, Mike. You know, it's clear that we thought you were the best person for this role, because, you know, you have that, you know, very outgoing personality, really a person that you can connect with people on different levels. But, you know, you do have a pretty remarkable story about your Veteran Services. So, tell us about your family and how you're connected that way.
So, not only am I the veteran, but my husband is a Wounded Warrior, retired Army. My father was with the 82nd Airborne out of Vincenza, Italy.
Wow.
And now, my son, who is stationed in Alaska, and we just got word that he deploys to Iraq, and because of OPSEC, I won't say when or where, but he is deploying, so-
Wow.
-a long line, everybody in the family, yeah. And then, my daughter, who will be 14, is already thinking about enlisting, so that's another one, my heart hurts a little bit.
Yeah, sort of a fully committed family, though, in that regard, so it's-
Yes, yeah, well, we're very patriotic, and we understand that we are very fortunate to live in this country, and you know, it's not without its issues, but nowhere else in the world, so we have the freedoms we do here.
No, that's absolutely true, and I appreciate, I think we're all grateful for your service and your family's service.
Thank you.
So, thank you for everything that you've done for us. I just, going over the next year, obviously, there's still a pretty, you know, a pretty good warning curve that you're making your way through, and there's a lot of training that you've gone through, but every Veterans Agent goes through this, so it's not, you're not any different than anyone else has gone through. And Mike went through it, you know, Mike is, you know, a decorated veteran too, and he's been, you know, he's served in that role, but he went through the same steps that you've gone through, you know, you're going through right now. And Mike, maybe just talk about that a little bit, just because you served in that role.
Sure. One of the great things is that you have a support network. So, there is a statewide association that you are involved in, you go into the training, you get three different training sessions a year. By the time you get to your third one, you already know this, because you've been to one, you really, not only do you get some technical training on some of the changing laws in state and federal laws, but also, you build a network. You can call the community next door, or send out to the listserv and find out what are other people doing, best practices for serving veterans and their families, and that's one of the things you found out quickly, it's not just the veterans, it's also the dependents and widows/widowers. So, yeah, and it did, it took, I'd say it was six months to a year before I was comfortable and felt like I knew what I was doing, but then I still learned something new every single day, so hats off to you, you're doing a great job.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that. And in February, I went away to my first conference, and everybody there was welcoming. And as a D-VOP, I had worked with VSOs, but now, being in the VSO role, it's opened up my eyes too, because we're not just, you know, we don't deal with the veterans, you know, we, some days, we are medical coders, other days, we are, you know-
Advisors.
Advisors, yeah, we do so much.
Counselors.
We do so much.
And you not only deal with the veteran, you deal with the entire family, in many cases.
We do deal with the family, yeah, yeah.
So, it's a pretty diverse role, it's a very important role. And Massachusetts is the only state in the Commonwealth that provides this service.
That's right.
So, we are very committed to supporting our veterans, clearly, as a state and a Commonwealth, that, and I've always been very proud of that, because it's the fact that, you know, veterans give so much to this country, and yet, you know, we need to always give back to them as well.
I agree.
And I think it's really great that you provide that service. I think what's also interesting about your background is the fact that you speak multiple languages.
I do.
So, tell us a little bit about that.
I do. So, because both my parents are immigrants, we grew up speaking Portuguese, and then I was about eight years old before I really started speaking English, and so, growing up, you know, I was the foreign kid on the block. And then, because Portuguese is so close to Spanish, and my husband is Spanish-speaking, I speak Spanish. And then, I also speak some conversational Czech and Icelandic.
Wow.
Languages, I can't do math in my head, but I can speak all these languages, yeah.
You speak the languages, huh? Well, that's interesting. So, that's really, it's interesting, because we, you know, it's, having a multilingual member of the staff is huge for us, because the world is changing around us.
Sure.
And everybody has different languages that come to us, and it's sometimes going to be an impediment for us, but now that we have somebody in the building that can speak multiple languages, that's a resource, that's actually helpful to us too, providing services to the residents. So, we're grateful for that as well. So, what do you think are the big goals for you over the course of the next year? What do you think?
Well, I've already started to implement a Welcome Home Package for veterans who are returning to Foxborough, and they get a nice little letter from me and some resources, and so, they know that they can come and see me, that, because, and it's surprising, but a lot of people don't know that VSOs exist.
Right, right.
So, we've had a few come back, and they've received the packets.
Right.
I also would love to implement a parking space designated for Purple Heart recipients in the town. Foxborough is a Purple Heart town, so I would love to see that happen.
Okay.
And then, eventually, I wanted to put together a Foxborough Veterans Only Event, just for camaraderie, because I've noticed that veterans coming home, and even the older generation, the Vietnam veterans, they stick to themselves, and you know, we are very proud people, we don't like asking for help. And so, eventually, you know, people kind of distance themselves, and they feel lonely, and then it affects their mental health. So, if we can put together an event just for the camaraderie, you know, some food, some barbecue, maybe it'll go to range, because veterans love that type of stuff.
Right.
It would let people network and come together as a community, and so, you know, so that you're not alone, there is help, and you know, we are friends.
That's right.
Veterans share that connection, you know, you walk into a room of strangers, and you can always point out who the veteran is, and two veterans get together and it's an instant connection.
Oh, yeah.
So, that's what I'm hoping to do, and it's on my radar for the next year.
Excellent, that's a great, that's a great set of goals. So, I think your, obviously, your energy level is great, you want to keep it, don't let that drop off.
Lots of coffee.
That's really important, that's right. And it's interesting, because Ally, I think the first few weeks she was in Town Hall, and things started showing up, you know, sweets and baked goods started showing up in the break room, and I'm saying, okay, where is, who's bringing this stuff in?
Portuguese pastries.
It's the Portuguese pastries, and it's like, okay. So, and then, we said, we all figured it out pretty soon, that it was Ally, and she has a family that loves food, and as we all do, you know, and I meet probably more than most people.
The cousin that owns a bakery, right?
That's right, I have a cousin who owns a bakery in Fall River, and best sweetbread, best pastries I've ever had, so, yes.
So, she's not been very good for our waistline.
Stop bringing it to our building.
Well, calories don't count with yours with colleagues, that's a rule.
That's right, that's a rule. That's a good rule, actually. So, thank you for everything, and-
Absolutely, thank you.
And we're obviously here to support you in any way, shape, or form, and particularly to support the veterans. So, I think that's the message you want to get out today.
Absolutely.
Is that we do here, are here to support veterans. You know, the thing is, is that, and you touched upon this a few minutes ago, was that a lot of veterans are just too proud to even ask.
Yep.
And I think that's something that we all appreciate, and we all recognize, and we all, you know, really respect that. The challenge that we have, though, is that, you know, they shouldn't be afraid to ask, because, you know, we're here to provide that service for them, and we want to provide it to them. I think your way of sort of breaking the ice in some ways, with, you know, the more informal gatherings, you know, getting them in an environment where they can feel comfortable, and getting to know people beyond the veteran community, I think is helpful for them too, because they need to know that, you know, that it's not just the veterans that support them, it's the rest of the community that do too.
Right.
So, we think we, you know, we've got to break some new ground here, and while we're in that role, you know, breaking new ground, right?
I'm trying.
We're going to try and, we're going to try and work on that overall, as a mission in this office. So, thank you for doing what you do.
Oh, you're quite welcome. I'm very lucky to be here, so thanks for, thanks for hiring me.
No, you're quite welcome.
We've been fortunate, and I know you've noticed how supportive our community is-
Oh, yes.
-and our leadership across the board of veterans and our deployed military, and-
Yes.
So, no, that's great.
Foxborough is a great community, like, I don't understand, I don't know if the citizens realize how lucky they are to be here, because this is a beautiful town, great leadership, great community, great family vibes, so I'm just very lucky and very fortunate to be here.
Great, well, thank you. So, Mike, you haven't really, you have served in the role of Assistant Town Manager since January as well, when Ally got here, you took over your new role, and you've been in your role for three months now, so tell us a little bit about that transition, because I know that you've, so, let me just back up for a second, because that's a, it's sort of a loaded question in a lot of ways, but, so, you took over in January, Mary Beth Bernard left, she was retired, which is, like, she's semi-retired, I guess, because she's still working in places, and she's still pretty busy, actually, doing some stuff. But, she wanted to spend more time with her grandchildren, which is great, and I'm really happy for her, and that's worked out really well for her. But, you know, you've always aspired to work in a higher level of government. You and I first spoke when we, when I first arrived in Foxborough, that you wanted to get into the Suffolk Program, which is a leadership program that's put on by the MMA and the towns, cities and towns across the Commonwealth. And that really has, has really sort of set you in a different direction, from not just being a Veterans Agent, but looking towards the administrative role and leadership role of the community. So, tell us a little bit about how you got to that point, and share with folks, you know, what you like about and what you find is challenging.
Sure, sure. So, I've been in many different roles through my career, started in the military, and then private, you know, corporate, and then nonprofit, and then moved here to Foxborough, to municipal government, where I found it really exciting, and really loved being the town's Veteran Service Officer, it was exciting, to the point where I wanted more. I wanted to learn more about the wider community, what the other departments are doing, how it all comes together, the budget, the bylaws, and it's an exciting process, and, you know, you've given me the opportunity to get involved in economic development here in town, which has been really exciting, and human resources. And so, it's been challenging, it's been a learning experience, it's been fun, I've learned something new every single day, and I know I'll continue to, and I really appreciate that I've had the opportunity to work in Foxborough for the citizens of Foxborough, to work for you, and to be mentored by great leaders, both Mary Beth and yourself, you know, as I move through my career.
I appreciate that. So, the, I think what we, the track that you're on now is to learn the role of the Assistant in the HR part, which is an acquired learning, obviously, you know, and sometimes it's better practice than it is learned, because it's the part of the job that, believe it or not, you know, I was an HR Director myself, and served in that role, and sort of learned it as I went through, I never really had any formal training, but then I learned it as I went through it, similar to the path that you're taking yourself, you know, learning it as you go along, getting the training, getting the classes that teach you how to do this job well. But, I think you know, and probably as I've learned over the years, that it's difficult, because the HR stuff takes up more of your day than probably anything else.
Yes, it does.
Because people, issues happen every day. They're not something that, you know, happened, well, I'll plan to have it next week, I'll deal with it next week, and often days, you have a whole day planned, and something happens at nine o'clock in the morning, and it takes you a whole day to try and resolve it. So, that's the kind of world that we live in, in municipal government, but also, in the private sector, because it's an HR, HR today is a very diverse, complicated, lots of rules, regulations, that's not just come from Foxborough, but from the state, from the federal government, from across the whole spectrum of things, that are learned as you go through the business. But, I think you've picked up on this very, very well, you've handled yourself well, and I think your Veteran Service skills have sort of helped you in the sense of trying to help people resolve, help resolve issues, you know, having that certain compassion and sensitivity in trying to resolve issues, so, and not to make them personal, but to make them, you know, just to resolve it, so that it works for the best of the community and for the employee. So, I appreciate the work that you've been doing in that area.
Thank you, Bill.
So, anyway, so, I want to just move to a different topic, and that is to talk about the warrant, the annual town meeting warrant, which is coming up in May, first Monday, first Monday, second Monday in May, actually, May 8th, and it'll be at the high school, starting at 7:30 PM, at the, for the annual town meeting. So, I wanted to just go over, go through it roughly, there are 27 articles, the list is 28 here, but there's actually 27 articles when we're through, going through it tonight, and they range from a lot of things that are mostly routine, that we normally do every annual town meeting, like, for instance, the budget, and we go through the different reports and the different approvals that we do annually. So, we're just going to go through it roughly, to sort of explain it to people, and we'll go, we can actually take another session to go through this a little bit more in detail, maybe have some of the experts, particularly in the zoning areas, because I think that's going to take up a fair amount of time on this warrant, but not that it's all controversial, it's just that it's just time-consuming in terms of the issue. So, as we go through the warrant, we have the first, the Annual Town Elections Report, which is pretty routine, that's a report on what the results were at the election, which is going to be held the previous Tuesday before the annual town meeting. The annual town reports, it's just, any committee that wants to submit a report can certainly do that. We actually have the reports of the committees, which, again, the reports of committees that want to provide that. The annual town reports, by the way, will be available to everyone at town meeting, so people can have, residents can have them if they'd like to see those. The operating budget is Article 4, which is, which requires an explanation all to itself. It's up, it's up a little over 4% overall. The individual sides of government, for instance, the town and school sides are both around 3%, 3.5% in that range in terms of increase, so that's actually pretty, pretty normal, it's actually, you know, below a little bit where we normally are in that case. Obviously, the, it's the fixed costs that are driving the numbers up a little bit beyond 4%. The CIP budget, we actually did that, did a show on that a few weeks ago, presented that to the residents, and actually saw the actual decisions that were made in the CIP budget, and anybody who wants to see that, there's actually was a taped version of that, you can actually see that if you look it up on cable access. The fire contract, it's a fire collector bargaining contract, we're looking to finish that and have that ready for annual town meeting. Police contract, I don't think will be ready, so we think we'll probably eliminate that for consideration tonight.
Correct, not quite ready.
Probably not quite ready for consideration. The dispatch contract will be ready, the library contract will be ready. The revolving funds, that's the annual spending limits that we set, so that's a pretty, that's a routine article. The Fund Qualified OPEB Trust, that's our annual contribution, that's about almost a million dollars, $968,000, that we do every single year for, to keep the, to maintain the annual required contribution online. One of the few communities, by the way, in the Commonwealth that actually does that, so we're actually, that's something we're very proud of. Fund stabilization, we provide an annual contribution of about $100,000, which we're going to do again this year. The unpaid bills, we have, we have about $51,000 in unpaid bills, and what happened here is that there were some bills that came, that we converted, if residents know, that we converted our, a lot of our lights to LEDs, streetlights, and we actually acquired the streetlights a few years ago, and we went through that process, but the catch-up process for national grid was a little longer than we anticipated, and so, the bills, some of the bills, they waited on submitting some of those bills until now, so now we have, now they fall into a different fiscal year, so we have to pay those. In addition to that, we had some insurance claims that finally got resolved, but they were, again, they were from previous fiscal years, so now we have to pay them in this fiscal year. So, that's why, that's on the warrant for consideration. Borough school building borrowing authorization, that, there was a minor error that was made in the final request of the total amount that was needed, so we need to correct, there's about a $64,000 correction that needs to be made to the borrowing authorization, and that'll be, that'll be taken up with that. So, that's not a major issue, but it's something we need to correct for the record. You want to talk about the parking bylaw, Mike?
Sure. So, the changes to the parking bylaw are mostly centered around handicap parking and the placards. There's an adjustment to the fine that, for folks who abuse that bylaw. In other words, what happens right now is if somebody doesn't have their placard up, it's a $300 ticket for parking in a handicap parking spot. However, if somebody has just forgotten to put their placard up, or they put it on the dash and it's upside down, that's just a mistake that somebody's made, and the intent is not to charge them $300, so if they just come into the police department, they can show their placard, "This was me," that can be adjusted down to a $20 ticket, and it's a learning point, that's what that's about.
Okay. And then, the signed bylaw, miscellaneous provisions, anything else in that bylaw that we want to correct, Mike, is there just anything that sticks out? Or is that the, is that attached to the parking bylaw?
No, that's separate, that's mostly a cleanup article.
Okay.
Clean up of language, just-
Sorry, signed bylaw, so my mistake. And then, the same thing with the amend the sign with electronic and digital billboard provisions, that's another cleanup and modernization of that bylaw, that's based on new regulations and standards.
That's correct.
The citizens petition to amend the sign bylaw, that was a petition made by the Orpheum Theater, to try and allow them, to provide them the ability to put an electronic billboard sign on their, on their building. Right now, it's not allowed in that particular area, so this would be an amendment to that, to allow for that organization or any other, was it nonprofit-type organization to have such a sign.
That's correct.
So, that's included in that bylaw, that petition. Some miscellaneous zoning changes are being proposed, and maybe we can come back and maybe have Paige Duncan come in and talk about some of those changes at another, at a follow-up meeting to this. Same thing with the amendments to tables of uses, the amendments to retail language, the amendments to ASBIL plans, except Shea Lane is a public way, is a new road that's just been finalized, so that's met all the requirements, so that's going to be accepted as a public way. And water system improvements, and the water, amend the sewer service map, those are things that the Public Works Department are putting together now. The sewer, sewer service area map is something we do annually for those people that want to be included in the sewer district, and so, we have to require, it does require town meeting action to include them in the district, so that's something that we are including now at this time. And modification of the Zone 2 Aqua Fair Protection Map, that's also something that's been worked on for quite a while now, to try and get that more in line with realities of what's actually happening in those areas, and so, that's actually, that's on the consideration too. Adult-only retail tobacco stores, that's, I think that's getting to do with learning more of the vape shops, and I think that's something that, that we're trying to modernize our rules and regulations and our zoning bylaws to come up to speed on those. We certainly don't want to see those shops pop up just anywhere, so-
Of course.
-we've actually identified some areas where that's appropriate and the best use. So, so that, I think it captures it in a nutshell, those are the key items that we've been working on for this upcoming town meeting, I said 27 articles in all, and it should be, there's not a lot of controversy with this article, with these articles that I can see. I'm sure there'll be some discussion, as there always is, at a town meeting about the way things are going, and we'll see how it goes, but I think we certainly encourage everyone to attend the town meeting, and to be part of the discussion that goes on, because it's, this is your community, it's, this is your legislative, you're the legislative body that acts to allows us to do the work that we do, so we appreciate everyone's attentions and participation in that. Have I missed anything, Mike? Am I covered at all?
I think you've hit it all, but, you know, the last thing you just said is a really important point, and that is that the legislative body in this municipality and in the other in the Commonwealth is the town meeting, so folks that show up, they're the ones that get to vote and decide what happens in town. And I think in this town, folks do a really good job, I mean, between, from the department heads to the town manager, where the budget gets reviewed, and then off to the Advisory Committee, where they really spend most of the winter reviewing the articles, the budget, bringing the department heads, and then, you know, next stop is the voters, so hopefully, they do show up to town meeting and voice their opinions and support.
That's a very, very good point, Mike. So, as, so residents that may or may not be familiar with the process, the budget process for us starts really in October, November of each year, where we start putting those documents together, have our preliminary discussions about, you know, where we'd like to go, how the revenue looks for next year, and it's interesting, because we're actually looking 18 months forward into where the town's going to be, so it's always a bit of a guess, but it's an educated guess, because we're based on trends and what we know- Because we're based on trends and what we know, how the economy is, is moving and how things are happening and how things have traditionally, you know, queued up here in the community. So we, we go through that, that process. And then we, we, the department heads do their thing where they submit their budget requests. We go through them at the town manager's office and review each one of those budgets with a hearing for each one. And then I submit those recommendations to the, to the board of selectmen and then to the advisory committee. So it then gets watered down even further or whittled down even further, if you will. So, and then we end up with a final document that is put together by the advisory committee with their final recommendations. So they can make their recommendations. I make my recommendations to selectmen. And ultimately the advisory committee makes its recommendations, which then goes to the town meeting for final consideration. So I think it's important that those who may be attending final town meeting for the first time or those, even those who have been going to town meeting for many years, know that this is a very exhaustive process that we go through. And so when anybody comes to a meeting for the town meeting for the first time, they should know that that's been months of work to get to that point. Six, seven, eight months sometimes, working on items that are being considered for final, final, final action, if you will, at the town meeting. So it does get quite a bit of review, quite a bit of discussion. And the, and the advisory committee serves as sort of like the arm of town meeting to go through those, those details and to make sure that it's, it's done, done very, very well. So, and, and that, they ask all the tough questions and, and, and we're all there to try and respond to those. And they provide us, we provide them as much information as they need. So I just want to say, I thank, want to thank you both for being here today.
Thanks for having us.
And certainly we'll be back in front of the residents with further information as needed for the, for the town meeting. And hopefully everyone will, will, that wants to go can go and certainly participate and will, will be educated on the issues as they, as they come up. So for that, I want to say thanks again and we'll see you next time on the Ask Bill Keegan Show. And if I don't see you in between then, have a great day and great week.